The 8th is Memorial Day. We will have our annual parade, starting promptly at 10 o'clock at Town Hall and proceeding to the new Westwood Cemetery. I'd ask that all residents who can, please join us, the American Legion Post 320, Westwood veterans, and a host of area residents who show up every day, every year on this particular day for what has been a great event in Westwood. So, please join us. On June 12th, our annual farmers market will start again for the season. This year, new, it'll be in front of Town Hall, right?
Yeah, for the first two weeks.
Okay.
And then move to the new plaza that's under construction.
Okay, so it will not be at St. Margaret Mary's anymore. Okay. So, it'll be in the vicinity of Town Hall. It'll be open from Tuesdays from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. from June 12th through October 9th, rain or shine. Vendors will be selling seafood, produce, bread, and much more. The farmers market is an approved farmers market under the auspices of the Massachusetts Federation of Farmers Markets, and the market will adhere to all of their guidelines. Another nice annual event that we have. The 2017 Annual Report has been published. It is available for all residents to view on the town of Westwood website. This year, the report was compiled internally with in-house staff, namely Betsy Narcissos. Thank you for doing that, Betsy. It is a great book, full of great information. Keep it by your nightstand. You will surely fall asleep.
That sounds so nice.
All right, no, no, it's great reading. It's great reading. It'll keep you up all night. How's that?
There you go.
Any better?
All right, it's not the New York Times Bestseller, but it's a great book nevertheless, okay?
And a lot of hard work.
Tough crowd tonight. Okay, couple of changes to the meeting. The public hearing for the small wireless antenna at 1 University Avenue, formerly 400 Blue Hill Drive, will be postponed to a later date. Later this evening, we will be setting dates for future Board of Selectmen meetings. We will make a formal motion at that time to continue this hearing, and we will establish the new date at that time. Secondly, the public hearing for the Temple Beth David Unattended Donation Container has been canceled for this evening. The board will republish and notify abouters of the new date. So, at this time, I can entertain a motion to cancel?
I move that we cancel the public hearing scheduled for this evening related to both the application, or related to the application, excuse me, for the unintended donation container to be located at Temple Beth David, and that the staff be asked to re-advertise and notify abouters of a new hearing date.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Then we have a public hearing for Panda Express Common Victular License Application. Nora Lockning is here. I know there are some representatives from Panda Express who want to join us.
Another chair?
Okay.
Will you just give us a little background, Nora?
Sure. Noodles at University Station closed down a little while ago, and Panda Express has been fitting out the space for a new restaurant, and they have applied for a CV license. The construction work is still underway, and the Board of Health and the Building Department have yet to certify the final results. So, we're asking for this board to consider granting the CV license with conditions that it reach its final approvals by the Building Department and Board of Health.
Welcome. Could you just both identify yourselves? It is a public hearing.
Sure. I'm Matt Brook with Bowler Engineering. I was involved at the construction permit base, going through the building permit and the Health Department, you know, planning reviews and such.
Christina Barajas. So, I oversee the operations and the stores here in Massachusetts.
Great, okay. How many stores do you have in Massachusetts?
I have two, and then two licenses in the universities.
Okay, great. I don't, you don't have any issues, Nora?
No, other than...
There'll be conditions set to the license?
Right, just not complete, yeah.
I don't have anything, Michael.
No. I move that we approve the issuance of a CV license to Panda Express at University Station, subject to sign-off by the Building and Health Departments.
Now, do we need to approve the Fire Department's?
Tell me.
The Building Department won't sign off until the Fire Department has, so I don't think it has to be a second.
I'll amend my motion anyway to include the Fire Department's sign-off.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, University Station. Good luck.
So, get through the Building and Health Department, Fire Department, and you're good to go.
Okay.
Estuary date of opening, any idea?
About June 26th. We also have another one opening June 6th and May 4th.
Oh, nice.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
We're expanding.
Got one at Walpole Mall.
Right?
Yeah.
As she was talking, I'm like, I know.
On the way home, huh?
Yes.
No, it's right near, um, I like going to the Texas Roadhouse.
I think she meant two under her control, far more than two.
No, no, as she was talking, I was trying to think. There is one at Walpole Mall. Okay, next up, we have a change in officer for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. What's going on?
So, change in officer at Anthony's? Joe Devlin is here to explain the details.
Anthony's, we were here a year ago, almost exactly, for the same type of thing. What's happening is the two officers are leaving are actually founding members. One of the Anthony's is the Anthony of Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. Both of them are still small owners. They were original owners, and as the company grows, their percentage, you know, gets smaller. But as the company grows, they need executives who are, you know, better experienced in running a larger chain restaurant, and that's who is replacing them. Anthony still sits on a Board of Directors, so to speak, at an upper-tier level, and that's where this other change is happening. All of the owners have appointees there, and one of the owners, a large equity fund, is changing out their person. So, that's the second or third part of this. What does it mean? Here's another one. I think I said this last year. What's that mean for the Anthony's in Westwood? Absolutely nothing's changing. No one's going to notice the difference.
So, she will still be in charge?
Yes.
Nora, anything?
No.
This is kind of the Full Employment Act for you, right?
I run around the state a lot of times, saying this speech.
Wherever they've got one, you're going to.
And the "nothing is changing" change.
Yeah, but you have to do it. It's required, yes. We require it.
I enjoy it.
Okay, I'm glad. I move that we approve the recommended change of officers, change of beneficial interests for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, located at 119 University Avenue, to include the following. Wayne Jones is replacing Anthony Bruno as president and manager. Michelle Zavolta is replacing Charles Locke as secretary, and Michael Hislop is replacing Henrique Faltoff as LLC manager of Cardboard Box LLC, an upper-tier company.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed none? Thanks, Joe. Don't go anywhere, Joe. Tell us about Wegmans.
So, this one's even more simple. James Leo, 29-year veteran of Wegmans, is retiring. He's being replaced by the General Counsel as Secretary of this mass entity that holds the licenses. The General Counsel is 20-plus years at Wegmans, Steve Van Arsdale. It essentially boils down to who signs the corporate documents on behalf of this entity. Your Town Council might think I've oversimplified that, but that's largely what it is.
No concerns at all.
Okay. I move we approve the change of Corporate Secretary from James Leo to Stephen Van Arsdale for Wegmans located at 169 University Avenue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
Hi.
Good night.
Sorry, Joe.
You and I know.
Joan, are you going to join us? So, this is, I'm glad to see this. So, the next topic is the performance evaluation process, and I'll let you kind of walk through it, Joan.
So, this specifically is about the performance review process for the town administrator, as well as other key employees of the town. And we had devised a system a couple of years ago now for the, or formalized it, and as it turns out, we were prescient that that system is in full compliance with the law. There's recently been a case that was settled with the SJC, where in another town, people objected to the Board of Selectmen deliberating, you know, passing back and forth evaluations of the town administrator. So, our process actually is perfectly in compliance with the law, and so I'd like to propose that we continue our past practice, which is for me to be, you know, to solicit input from each of you individually on our town administrator's performance. I will provide you with feedback from department heads and direct reports on Mike, so that you can sort of have that as your, you know, as another piece of input for your feedback. You give your feedback to me. I will compile a consensus review of all of your feedback, and then I can deliver the consensus review to the Chair. So, that would be to you, John, because you were the Chair during this fiscal year. And then, we could have the meeting at, in a regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting, an open session. And I've, you know, based on my understanding, I've also consulted with our labor attorney to make sure that that is in compliance, and we are good to go with that process. So, that's the one I would propose for the town administrator. In addition, I would like to formalize the process of Board of Selectmen having, serving as second evaluators on other key employees for the town. So, we are proposing that the Chair serve as second evaluator for the Chief of Police's evaluation. So, in that process, Mike, as town administrator, would deliver the review, but, you know, would create the consensus review from, feedback from others, but forward it to you, John, for your opinion, so you could give your input. We thought that the Clerk would do the Fire Chief and Finance Director, and that the third member would be the second evaluator for DPW Director and the Director of Community Economic Development. Those were the positions that really have that, you know, significant impact on the governance of the town.
Yeah, so I guess my only question on this was, so the Chair is working with you on the review of the Chief of Police. Will the other two members see what we have finalized before the open meeting?
For the Chief of Police? That's not done in an open meeting. That's done privately.
All others other than me.
Okay. So, will they see it at all?
Historically, it has not been unless we've asked.
In practice, because it's kind of private.
Unless we ask.
And the reason for switching it up and standardizing it, which I like, is that each one of you, in the course of your term, get to evaluate the five individuals that actually report.
But should we have some input we want to share with you for the process?
Absolutely.
Yeah, certainly, that's exactly right. If you have things you want to make sure to get into...
No, I like this. So, this, we're going to try to formalize this kind of going forward.
Yes, starting with this performance review season.
You know, and I appreciate you doing this. I think, and we don't have to figure it out tonight, and you don't know the dates of our future meetings yet, because we're going to do that at the end of this.
Right.
But I think we should now set up an actual timeline, because I just think the first two years and some of the impetus for this was those, like, Friday afternoon phone calls in late June, saying, "Can you guys approve this? Because we've got a process of raises." And I just want to get away from that. So, if we could just follow up after we set our dates tonight, if you could send out an email?
Sure. For the town administrators' review this year, there may be a different timing because of your travel plans.
I haven't told them yet, but...
Yeah, it's in our packets.
Yeah.
It is. It's on plan.
You know, that's, I'm not, I'm not, I don't really care what it is. I just think there needs to be one.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
And I think that holds everybody accountable.
Right.
Including the board.
Right.
That people are actually turning things in when expected and...
Absolutely. And when you receive, you know, certainly, we've distributed performance review information to the town employees at large, and there are those milestones, and this was just more of a...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I like it. I mean, it's good. I just, I just, I think, just to tie it all up, would be nice to have an actual timeline. But, I mean, I think this is fine. I guess, too, I mean, Mike, do you kind of comment on your year-end goals before you send anything to us? How do you envision that?
Yeah, so, the process, and I'm sorry, I kind of skipped over it. The way it would work with the town administrator is that the town administrator would complete a self-evaluation.
Okay, and you'll share that with us.
And share that, so that you'd get that. You'd get any input from department heads and direct reports. So, you're getting sort of the feedback from Mike himself and his direct reports, and then you then can say, "Okay, now here's what I want to add my two cents to that." Then you give it back to me, and I create the consensus review. What can't happen is that, of course, the members of the Board of Selectmen can't see each other's evaluations, because that's considered...
Right. And we've, I mean, that's how it's been operated for years. I mean, I think that's fine. Okay.
I have a question. The process of the review of the other positions, not the town administrator, just describe the sequencing.
So, as the, it's a two-step process that Mike would create a review of Chief Deckers, for example. And in doing that, he may talk to other people that, you know, some direct reports of Chief Deckers or whatever. He was going to, he comes up with his review of Chief Deckers. Chief Deckers will also complete a review that he would like, you know, to give to Mike. Not a review of Mike, but to say, "Here's some things that I do that you may not know about. Here's some things, my perceived areas of...," sort of a self-evaluation as well. And it's very simple, but it's really meant to create a conversation between the two. And then, Mike would take that into consideration. They come up with the consensus review, and, but he would have shown you his feedback to Chief Deckers prior to that one-on-one meeting that the two of them would then have to discuss their relationship, their work relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, too, and I know that we're just trying to, this is a big lift, so we're trying to get a lot done. But, you know, along with the reviews of the department heads, I think there's a part of that of goal-setting, right? So, rather than just being reactive in the end, if these people can be included with just you or Mike in the beginning, that might be helpful, rather than just seeing at the end what the end results were, just engaging early on.
So, what do you mean by that?
Well, after the start of the fiscal year, I'm assuming there's goals set for the year.
Right.
Right? So, as, if you were to read this, the Chair, for example, is doing the review of the Chief of Police at the end of the year, right? Alls I'm saying is, it would be, I think, a nice way to do it is include the Chair in the setting of that goal that they will be reviewing at the end.
I think it's in the form, right? It is in the form. I'm looking at it.
Yeah, so, so, part of the conversation, part of the review conversation is, "Here's how I did on the goals that we had set for this fiscal year."
Right, but that's the endpoint. I'm saying at the beginning point.
No, it says, you know, against 18, and then FY 19.
Was that the intent? Am I...
Yeah, so, it's, it's, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not, I should have given you the actual form to see.
I was reading now that at the end of the year, we would be...
At the end of the year, there's a discussion of, "How did we do this year?" And it's also a kickoff of one of the goals for the following year.
Oh, okay, okay. That's how I took that.
But I think that's a great point, to your point of saying, once those goals are established, the second evaluator should get a copy of those, you know, going forward. So, I think that we can build that into the process.
Could you just give it to them at the end of 18 before they be, you know, before they do their evaluation? In other words, at the end of 19.
Right.
They say, "Oh, by the way, this is what the Chair decided last year were the goals, and you get to decide if those were met or not met, and go from there."
Right, yes, yes. You would have, we certainly can provide you with that as second evaluator. Here's what the goals were. And then, going forward, give them to you earlier in the year. I think that's your point.
Yeah, I was just, I think it would be interesting, or maybe, and I'll defer to you, but if someone's going to be expected to review at the end, if they had some input in what that measurement was in the beginning.
Sounds good.
Going over like a lead balloon, just a thought.
[laughing].
I mean, if it's truly that...
You're asking for continuity of this question.
Well, I think if the Chair is to be, you know, if you're trying to, if we're trying to engage the board in the process, to just say at the end, you know, "These were the goals of this person," comment on how they did. I'm saying, if it's really a 12-month process, they shouldn't just be brought in in the 12th month, right? There should be discussion in the first month.
Right, yes. I think that the process of the goal-setting, I think, truly is between the town administrator and each of his direct reports. I think to the extent that there's a goal that one of the selectmen say, "Oh, I really want to make sure we do this in the area of police or fire or whatever," that would be great. But are you suggesting that you're part of deciding what the goals should be for that?
Yes.
The entire board is involved in the goal-setting, at least in the major goals. There may be some minor and some personal goals that are not included in the major goals, but the major goals are brought to the entire board to adopt for the upcoming year, and then any of the minor goals or personal goals. And what you're suggesting, I think I get, is that you're evaluating the police chief this year. Mike will evaluate the police chief next year, so Mike should take a look at what the police chief's goals will be, because he'll be sitting with him next year.
Beginning of the year, yeah.
Wrap them up, and, you know, and switch it up with each of you, as, you know, as you're, what you're going to, whoever you're going to evaluate next year in your new role under the reorganized board will share with you the goals being set for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, and obviously, we're not involved in day-to-day operations, but if you supervise a team of people, and you know in your head what their goals are throughout the year, throughout the year, you think, "Wow, that's great. They're really working towards that goal," or they're not. I think, so, this way, it's just, to me, is a little bit, I'm not sure what the word is, but to be at the very end of the process and say, "This is what their goal was. This is what they did."
What I think you'll be doing.
And I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I think if you engage in the beginning and say, "The chief's goals for this year are, you know, increased traffic enforcement," and, you know, I think throughout the year, it would be helpful to know those things.
So, you can watch, see how they're doing. They all appear before you at every point in the year, and you can measure the goal as it progresses.
I mean, I think we're kind of saying the same thing.
I think we are, yeah.
It's a management tool that we're getting better at.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this is good. Like, this is, you know, this is a start, so we'll probably refine this every year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, my takeaway for it, for sure, this year is not only just the timeline, but getting those goals out to whoever's going to be the second evaluator right after the review, so you can say, "Here's what we're looking forward to for the next 12 months."
So, what do you, what do you need from us?
I just want to do, you know, basically, it was just to say, "Yep, we get it. We understand it. We're on board to play those roles."
Yeah, I mean, I think this was actually one of your goals, Mike, right? Was to at least establish some standard process.
Right. It was mine. It was mine.
I think it worked extremely well last year. I think it was clearer than maybe we've had in prior years. It's a discipline, because sometimes this is the last thing that people want to get to, and often becomes the thing that people don't do. So, I think the structure that's in place is just good for everybody. It's good for setting goals. It's good for people knowing where they stand. It's good for having discussions. I like the feedback process where the employee gets to make statements as well, where they, you know, want some more support, whatever. I think it's healthy. And as opposed to, too often, review processes become, "What did you think of last week about the person?"
Cutting it, yeah. It's also cutting and pasting from last year's review. It's just not...
Yeah, it's more painful going through the motions, or it's a lack of doing it, which isn't good for anybody either. So, I really like this, and I commend you for providing the structure that you have. I think it's been really helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. This is, I think this is a great enhancement over prior years.
Great, thanks.
Michael, any?
No, thank you, Joan.
All right, thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Now, the thing we like least.
The reappointment process for various boards and committees. So...
It goes on forever.
It's down already.
Trying to eliminate some of it.
Yeah, so I do think this is actually, this is great, because some of this, Mike, really is, falls under your purview, and I just want to make sure the board has consensus with this. I know I don't have an issue. So, the Alcohol Review Committee, the Healthcare Review Committee, the Cronin Public Service Award Committee, the Roy London Humanitarian Award Committee, the Stormwater Management Committee, the Veterans Day Memorial Day Committee, and the Westwood Emergency Management Agency fall under your purview as the town administrator to a point, right? You don't need a board vote for that. So, I mean, I'm, you know, like, here from Nancy and Michael, I'm fine with that. I don't know if you guys have any concerns?
I just would appreciate you seeking input where necessary, where it applies.
Yeah, we have vacancies.
Oh, yeah, I definitely would.
I think it's a joint process, but under your authority to make the appointments.
And the end role of most of these committees is to come back to you with their recommendation. So, it's not like you're cut out of the process. You're actually the end product, telling you, you know, who should go to Roy London Ward and things like that.
Okay, so, then let's move on to the next segment. So, Individuals Not Seeking Reappointment This Year. Communication and Technology Advisory Committee, Steve Anderson, moved out of town in April and is no longer eligible for appointment. So, we are actively seeking someone?
Yeah, this is a very active committee, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. For Election Officers, Patricia Wade, Claire Hurl, Cynthia Buckley, and Elsa Delaplace will no longer be serving as election officers. Dottie seems to be in a continual recruitment cycle, right? So, we'll get names coming forward, okay. The Historical Commission, Miriam LaRose is stepping down. Islington Center Task Force, Abby McCabe, will provide support to this task force move forward, but had multiple conflicts with Planning Board responsibilities. Michael Riordan is going to be retiring. Chief Deckers has been appointed to the task force and will remain on to represent the Fire Department going forward. So, do we need a vote on that, or no?
No, you already did.
Oh, we did, okay.
When, I don't know if it's, there's another...
The people stepping down will run out the rest of their terms.
Oh, okay, okay.
Till June 30th. They just are not seeking reappointment.
Okay. Paul Aries is stepping down from the Recreation Commission, so we're seeking someone now, yeah. The Westwood Cultural Council, Melanie Guerra. The Cultural Council has a bylaw that requires members to step away after serving two consecutive terms. Youth and Family Services, Austin Bushy stepping down due to increased personal responsibilities. Austin represents the Thurston Middle School on the Youth and Family Service Commission, and Danielle Sutton will work with the school and Austin to identify a replacement to serve on the commission. Okay. Are there any that you need recommendations from us, or...
No, at this point, just the people not seeking reappointment just express that their, you know, responsibilities increase and they're not. But, it's not a terrible step-down list.
No, it's not. We're lucky. Okay, so now we have some new appointments?
Yes.
Okay, so, are we taking votes on these tonight?
These would have to be a vote for your approval.
So, we should do each one separately, correct?
Yeah.
Following individuals are being recommended for appointment. So, Melanie Guerra, since Melanie's term on the Cultural Council has come to an end, she has expressed interest in serving on the Westwood Historical Commission. Nancy Donahue has spoken with Melanie, is excited to welcome her to the commission for a full membership term. So, I think we should take a motion on that?
Christine, do you have dates and things assigned to these? Oh, I see it down, a couple pages.
Yeah, they are in, so...
Okay, I found it for the, I found it on page five. I move that we appoint Melanie Guerra as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2020. Is that, that's only two years from now. Should it be 2021?
2021, sorry.
Okay, expire on June 30th, 2021.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed none?
The next one, I move that we appoint Tiffany McCarthy, our town nurse, as an alternate member of the Local Emergency Planning Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I add someone? So, with the LEPC, I spoke with Lena Arena DeRosa today, and she will stay, she's going to be a member on LEPC as well, representing the senior center.
Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Just, LEPC doesn't run off our...
I know. It's in my head as LEPC.
Council on Aging Director is an important element because of...
And that's a one-year appointment?
One-year appointment, as well.
Okay, I move we reappoint, appoint?
Appoint.
Appoint. Lena D...
Lena Arena DeRosa.
Yeah, thank you. I just like calling her Lena. Lena Arena DeRosa, our Council on Aging Director, as a member of the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed none?
And Christine, on the next group, the student...
And Christine, on the next group, the student members of Youth and Family Services, is it one year or two?
They are actually a little bit longer. They are, I think they're going two years, 2020.
Okay. I move we appoint Diana Bezden-Deniu. Kevin, I don't know. You want to give it a try? Sorry, Diana. Kevin Cote and Samantha Nelson as student members of Youth and Family Service Commission for terms ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes none. Okay. And then going down a little bit further, Christine, these reappointments, are you looking for us to take action on these tonight?
Yeah, so the printed list in front of you, the one that's mostly all blue, is the most recent up-to-date as of 5:00 today. So these are all of our committees. This, this list only actually includes ones that are full. Like, we've, reappointing these members will create a full list.
Okay, okay.
So ones that are not in front of you tonight are gonna be ones that we'll talk about at the next meeting, the next regular selectman's meeting, just to go through makeup composition and/or continuance of their task force needs and missions. So I figured if you got the reappointments out of the way, we just can then talk about what you want to do going forward on other boards and committees.
So there are three items on this list that are not in blue. Two on the Conservation Commission and one, well, two. Westwood Environmental Action Committee. So how do you want, yes.
So for Commission on Disability, we, we just have not heard back from that individual. I was hoping that by 5:00 I would hear, because we reminded them, but I did not. So if you would like to skip and get a full committee representation, I'm, we're fine with that. There's still time. Same thing with Conservation Commission, we can hold off on that. They are a full committee, fully participating.
Do we have a policy on planning board members or associate member? Yeah, I don't know. I thought, I had thought Brian had gone off the Conservation Commission as an associate member.
He didn't resign his position as an associate member when he began his position as elected planning board member. He declined to request moving from associate member to a full member of the Conservation Commission, but he stayed in that position. But now that his term has expired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that.
Right, we just wouldn't reappoint.
By the board not reappointing.
Okay, so.
So skip the Conservation Commission.
We can do, we can do the things in blue.
You can do the other two. You can do the people in blue. The person in black, I, like I said, I just haven't heard that final confirmation.
So who do we want to put as the Norfolk County Selectmen's Association member? Do we actually need to do that one?
You can either think about it.
Okay, so we'll wait on that. Bob Rich from Pedestrian, he hasn't responded?
Still haven't heard back from him.
I haven't heard. He's a, he's a very strong member of the board, so I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
But we'll wait to hear from him.
Yeah.
And then, we act as the incredibly shrinking committee. It's down to three or four members?
Yeah.
What do we do? Does anybody have a recommendation on what we do with that? Can you guys think about it?
Yeah, we'll think about it.
Before we do any appointments, reappointments to that? Is that all right? Just, it's a committee that's just collapsed and they aren't even doing some of the things they used to do. I, I just, one thing I noticed that, it's unfortunate, I know Wendy Mullers and her husband were the driving force behind it when they lived in Westwood, but the spring cleanup effort and motivating volunteers to get out there and clean parks or side streets or, you know, anywhere that just trash accumulates through windstorms and whatever, things happen. And it's sad that that's not done anymore, and I thought this group was going to continue it.
Right.
So I think maybe there needs to be a discussion with the group to find out what. Yeah, or, you know, I think there's a disconnect between maybe what we want, and I don't, I'm not sure what this board wants. I know I missed that event, as I think it's something that's very helpful for the town. And there might be other things. I think we have to get on the same page.
Right, they do report, they report to you.
Yeah.
In the, at the end of the day.
If you could look into it, it'd be very helpful. So with that, I'm willing to make a motion that we reappoint all the, all in blue.
Okay.
On this list. Is that our?
Yeah, you're gonna attach this in a minute?
I'm fine.
I would just attach, yeah, I would just attach this in the minutes.
And then you could post in the minutes, right.
Yeah.
So we have a pretty comprehensive list, but I'll just make a general motion that, based on the list we have before us, I recommend that we reappoint all people in, that appear in blueprint. And that this will be attached to the record.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Foes none. Okay. Thank you for that.
Gets a lot out of the way.
Say a lot.
Okay, so we were gonna review the annual town meeting warrant articles and just get an understanding of who's gonna be presenting what.
Or speaking to.
Speaking to, yeah.
Team effort, no doubt.
1 through 12 was Pam.
So Mike, I know I owe someone a response on kind of the opening comments.
Yeah, they said.
I will look at that tonight.
Pam asked me to remind you that she wants.
So it's 1 through 10?
And then 1 through 10 is Pam, right?
Correct.
Authorization for disposition of municipal property, authorization of funding for various aspects to the redevelopment, and the zoning amendments related, that's, so 11 and 12, are you gonna speak to those?
Yes, so.
Okay. The school borrowing, the school committee will speak to, there's a petitioner article, road improvements.
It's generally.
That's standard.
Standard.
Okay. Town bylaw amendment placement of snow and ice around. Five amendments is John Deckers, appropriation, comprehensive studies, security needs for school and municipal buildings.
I'll do that.
Do you want to talk to that? Okay.
Yeah.
Appropriation of affordable housing units. I'm fine doing it.
Okay.
Okay? Is that it?
That's it.
Wow, okay.
I missed, I'm sorry.
Incredibly shrinking town meeting.
Road improvements is gonna be just standard one, so, I mean.
The road improvements?
If anyone asks questions, John.
I mean.
Anyone?
Todd.
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 At the end of the day, okay.
Would you like anybody to be backup?
I'll, I'll be there.
I know you'll be there.
I'm assuming it's only if there's questions, or do you want me to be prepared to present something from the get-go?
No.
Now, this will be, yeah, I think the FinCom has their narrative.
Right.
And you're gonna just mention what the articles are at the beginning of the night, John?
I am, yeah.
You're gonna give an overview, so it kind of gets covered then?
Yeah, I mean, mine's very brief.
Yeah.
I think we cut the controversial one.
I think you did so.
Yeah, you did.
So I mean, it's.
But, you know, if you, if you end up speaking, this is a good opportunity to say to people that this is important, that the town, that everybody join forces, because it's such a daunting task if we have these huge storms or when we have them. But supporting.
Work with the neighbors helping neighbors campaign that we have moving.
Yeah, which is great.
We'll, we'll head in that direction.
I mean, it's impossible to staff up for post-one-foot storm that covers fire hydrants and then what do you do with all those people afterwards that we can't afford to employ? But we need, we need to help, and we need to realize there's a responsibility, so. If you get a chance to speak because of some questions, it's a chance to educate.
Good? We good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on. Westwood Media Center, transfer of funds. So Mike, this is basically on the license that we allow the carriers in town, there's a small percentage of their gross revenue that comes to the town that's used to fund local access television.
Negotiate specifically.
So this is, this is really just a paper transfer of the cash.
Okay. I'm going to move that we approve the transfer of $19,594.82 and $3,135.13 from Comcast, and $41,829.53 from Verizon, totaling $64,559.48 to go to Westwood Media Center per the license agreements and the Westwood Media Center agreement signed by the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes none. Okay. So now we're gonna look at future Board of Selectmen meetings. So we have, obviously, town meeting on May 30th, and then we're meeting the day afterwards?
No.
Do we organize ourselves?
You're gonna meet at 6:30.
Oh, we're gonna do it first? Oh, okay, fine.
We'll do it then and just make it subject to the end.
Fine, fine.
And we don't have to meet two nights in a row.
Okay, so we don't, do we have any dates scheduled then after that?
No.
Oh, okay. So we should probably look.
When did you decide that, by the way, that we're doing before, the town meeting thing, doing it before?
Well, we were trying to figure out, you know, what we're gonna do at both of the meetings. We have two meetings scheduled, and we only need one thing that occurs, so it didn't make sense to come out two nights. I mean.
Is that all, is that all kosher? Have we checked with town council on that?
They can, they can reorganize before town meeting, of course.
Subject to the end of the.
Yeah, subject to take place at the end.
The conclusion, or whenever the conclusion is.
Yeah, it may not be the first night.
Who knows? We, we sure hope it is.
Sure hope it is, but it may not be.
So it's going out to June 18th too far?
I can't do June 18th. The only thing I can't do is the gridiron for the football team. They have fundraisers down at Norfolk Golf Course, in case anyone's interested. Golfing is at 3:00. 9:00 and 9:00 starts at 3:00 with dinner right afterwards.
You should be ready then for a meeting.
Fundraising for the high school football team, so.
You'll be ready for a meeting if it comes 7:30.
I'll be ready for a lot of things, but it won't be a meeting.
I can't do the 25th. Do we want to do the 19th or the 26th?
Why can't we do the 11th? Is the 11th too early?
It felt like it was too early.
If we, if we went with the 11th, we wouldn't be able to take up Temple Beth David that night because of the fact that we are re-advertising. We could just take it up better later, but typically, the board does meet twice in June, so if you wanted to try and do.
Because Mike's got two weeks vacation in the middle.
Two weeks.
Three weeks.
When's your vacation?
I'm gonna be doing a pro ball.
It's not a vacation, it's, yeah.
Not a vacation.
July, at the end of June, through the third week of July.
When do you leave?
The 20th, I don't know, but I have a phone call this morning.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we get together the 11th then?
Is it okay with you, Nancy?
It is.
Okay.
And then if we wanted to meet for a second time in June, it would have to be the 26th.
Then we could go until they come back.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You might not be here, but you'd be here to get the materials ready.
Right.
Yeah, I'll try to get it done Thursday before I leave, if I leave on Friday, so.
So the 26th, if we need the meeting?
Right.
Is that what we're saying?
Right.
So whole.
But then we're definitely not gonna meet July 2nd.
Could meet the 16th?
16th. I can do the 16th.
Well, hold on.
Yeah.
Mike won't have been back. There.
23rd would be better.
Okay, let's do the 23rd. July 23rd.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm, I'm gone.
The 23rd?
Yeah.
A week?
No, I'm sorry, I'm gone the following week. I'm, I'm here the 23rd.
Then that works.
7:23.
Yeah. August 13th.
Do we need to?
Is that too long, Christine?
No, you typically, you only done one, one meeting in July and one in August.
That would be nice, it's right in the middle.
Yeah, and Michael can always tell you if something comes up and the board needs to.
So, if we go the 13th, here's the only problem, if we go the 13th and then don't meet again, we have Labor Day and Rosh Hashanah, back-to-back Mondays in September.
We'd have to go off Monday.
Might have to go to August 27th? Or do a Tuesday?
What about the 4th?
Well, we have to be cognizant of.
We need to meet before the 15th.
Yeah.
Well, we may need, I mean, if we're, we think we're gonna have a fall town meeting, we should meet to be preparing, because the whole Finance Commission cycle starts. So what are the holidays?
So the 3rd is Labor Day.
Yeah, but when.
And the 10th is Rosh Hashanah. So we can do the 4th or the 11th.
The 4th is Election Day, primary day, not that we care, but it is.
What do you recommend, Mike?
Can you do the 11th?
You don't think that's too late, if we're possibly doing a town meeting?
Probably, I tend to probably put the 27th. Just in case, and then either the 4th or the, and then it's, depending on whether or not you do the 27th, do the 4th or the 11th.
Okay.
I'll say the 11th.
Yep, say the 11th.
Ooh, and everything else, and then I have the 4th, so.
So I think at the 27th meeting, we should set the fall, the fall dates.
Can we make sure that the 11th is still not presenting a problem with the religious holidays?
I think it's the 9th and 10th, man, so I don't think the 11th.
Okay, thank you. And, okay.
When is Yon Kippur? Isn't that the?
That's the following week, 18th to 19th.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Oh, I wasn't looking at that one. Got it. Good.
So do we want to keep going into October?
What do you, are you gonna do another meeting in September?
Yeah, we should probably, can we do the 24th? Right now, it looks fine.
Right.
Okay.
I think we should try as much as possible to not deviate from Monday nights. I know we have to with the religious holidays, but I think we need some predictability, because the Finance Commission is going to need to program in their dates, and we've got to be ready for them.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Oh, my God. I must have been looking at last year's then.
I only know because if I go to Vegas, I go the 10th or the 13th, and that's after Columbus Day.
Ignore me.
Columbus Day's the 8th?
Columbus Day's the 8th, not the 15th, sorry.
Yeah, that makes sense, the 15th is late.
Okay. So we're good?
Great.
So we're not gonna go into October then?
No. I prefer not to.
I think we need to get a handle from the Finance Commission. They have to reorganize, elect a new chair, and they're gonna need to look at their calendar, that it will definitely impact ours if we think there's gonna be a fall town meeting.
I mean, do we have any idea what the likelihood is now? Mike, we don't know, right?
We don't know, no. I think it's a point average on Monday.
Yeah.
Fancy.
A week.
So at this point, knowing that we have some dates, Christine, let's figure out the date for the public hearing for the small cell wireless antenna.
Yep.
What date would work best?
So June, June 26th, because June 11th would be too early, right?
I would only get 18th.
June 26th or July, I mean, July 23rd's kind of far out, but June 26th would be the only date.
June 26th, okay.
Would be the earliest date. And that's the same for Temple Beth David, right? Temple Beth David.
Are we meeting on June 25th?
End up going on July, July 23rd.
No, Temple Beth David will be.
26th.
That's, that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
June 26th.
I thought we had the meeting on the 25th.
No, that's a Monday.
That's a Monday.
We'll do Tuesday.
The June meeting?
The antenna as well.
I can make the 25th. Actually, I make the 26th.
Correct.
That could be June 11th then.
We could do the antenna on June 11th. So, if you want to take a vote on continuing, continuing the antenna.
I have, I'm just going to read it.
I'm just catching up. I want to make sure I don't miss that. Okay, so, I move that we continue the public hearing on the small cell wireless antenna at One University Avenue to our meeting scheduled for Monday, June 11th, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the public hearing on the small cell wireless antenna at One University Ave has been moved to June 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Christine, next, you, you need us to approve the meeting minutes of March 5th, March 19th, March 23rd, March 26th, April 9th, April 23rd, April 26th, and May 1st.
Do we need to, to a motion on the Temple Beth?
You did a motion to cancel.
Yeah, we already did.
You don't need to.
We already did this one, so we're canceling. This one, we, we have to, we have to postpone it.
Continue.
Yeah, so we will re-advertise Temple Beth David appropriately as a June 26th hearing in notify letters.
Anything on the meeting minutes?
I don't have them in front of me now.
Oof.
Those are just updated executive session minutes.
So, we did receive some edits. Um, which the board would need to vote to amend. Any, these are the executive session minutes. Because they were approved previously.
Okay.
Um, all of the edits were consistent with accuracy and updating appropriate information, so unless the board has questions.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay, I move approval of the minutes from March 5th, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed none?
I move approval of the minutes from March 19th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move approval of the minutes from March 23rd, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
June 26th, should be good.
Yep. I move approval of the minutes from March 26th, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I move approval of the minutes from April 9th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move approval of the minutes from April 9th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
June 23rd?
I just want to, stuck on that page for a moment there, okay. I move approval of the minutes from April 23rd with an amendment to the bottom of the page. The date needs to be updated. Bottom of the page says April 9th.
Okay.
You can just amend it to reflect that there, yeah, the footer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing in here for the 26th.
So, we'll do May 1st for now.
Do we have a meeting on the 26th?
Um, was that just? That was the meeting that you called executive session immediately, right?
Yes.
Oh, you have to, we do need minutes to reflect that we moved.
You do need minutes for the open session part of it. We can, we can do them next time.
Yeah, that one's easy to do.
We're a one pager.
Okay, and.
May 1st.
I move approval of the minutes from May 1st, 2018.
Right?
Yeah. You were not at that one, John.
It was May 1st.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All abstaining, but all in favor?
Aye. One abstention?
No abstention, okay. Anything else? Public press? Okay.
Is there any public yet?
Yep.
Two residents of Westwood. Need ever know? Okay. So, the, our next meeting is scheduled for.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty PM prior to the start of town meeting at Westwood High School.
In the professional development room.
The professional development room. Okay, at this time, the board will be going into executive session to discuss two issues. One issue is related to the contract negotiations of a department head, and one issue is related to the potential litigation with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussion were in open session. The board will not be returning to open session.
I move we go into executive session for the aforementioned reasons.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.